Then at the Manoa Fire Station, first watch. This evening, I'm going to read you the May statistics and also the June safety tip. So in May, we had one cooking fire, four activated alarms, forty-six medicals, and one hazardous materials incident. So the fire safety tip for the month of June is the Honolulu Fire Department is excited to announce the launch of two new public data tools on its official website at fire.honolulu.gov. They're called the Incident Trend Dashboard and the Fire Response Search Tool. The Incident Trend Dashboard gives residents easy access to five years of emergency data by neighborhood, including fire, rescue, medical, and hazardous materials incidents. With interactive maps and charts, the dashboard helps communities better understand emergency trends in their areas. The Fire Response Search Tool replaces the previous response mapping tool, which is no longer supported and was recently taken offline. This tool enables individuals and entities to look up specific emergency incidences incidents in which they have an interest in or may have been involved in or affected by. This tool also enhances transparency and provides residents with efficient and direct access to incidents in a secure and accessible format. Developed by the Honolulu Fire Department's Planning and Development Division with the help from a city and county of Honolulu, Ho'okele fellows intern, these data tools reflect our ongoing commitment to transparency, innovation, and community engagement. To access these tools, to access these data tools, please visit fire.honolulu.gov That's it. For me, any questions?
Any questions or comments? Hello? Sorry, mics aren't working.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
So the question was, does our fire station allow visitors to set up a tour? Yeah, if you stop by the station, we'll gladly take you on a tour of our station, yes. Yeah, just call the call the station and talk to the on-duty captain and we'll set up a date.
Okay, any other questions or comments for HFD? Member Lumen? Okay, sorry, we have the microphone working now. Any other comments or questions for Honolulu Fire? Okay, thank you. We'll see you again in August, since we're in recess for July, so we'll see you next in August.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, going next to HPD, thank you as well for bearing with us earlier. Please go ahead.
No problem. Welcome around with HPD. Hopefully you can hear me. These are stats for, excuse me, as May compared to the previous month. Motor vehicle thefts were five as compared to three. Burglaries were four as compared to two. Theft in general of fifteen as compared to five. And UEMVs, which are theft from autos, that was zero as compared to five. This is out of total calls for service of eight thousand, five thousand eight hundred ninety-two for the district. And further statistical information can be found at honolupd.org. And our safety tip for the month is just a friendly reminder that now that we've come into June, we're hitting hurricane season again. It's just a reminder that hurricanes and tropical storms combine the triple threat of violent winds, torrential rain, and storm surge. Each of these could pose a significant threat to life and property. So just remember that a watch is the one where they're saying they may come forty-eight hours out, get ready. But if there's a hurricane warning or tropical storm warning, that's the one where it's within thirty-six hours, you really need to prepare and take measures if you need to, yeah. So the warning is the one that you have to really be on the lookout for. And that's our safety tip for the month.
All right, any questions or comments for HPD? Hello, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm Brett Carishige, Manoa resident. Just wanted to bring up something I brought up last month's meeting after you had given your report, which was, you know, I've noticed an incidence, a greater incidence of graffiti tagging in Manoa and and around UH and Punahoe Street and all that. And the one is, you know, is that technically a crime? That, you know, is unlawful. And then number two, is there is there other efforts that HPD is doing to help deter, help to, you know, monitor and you know, mitigate that kind of graffiti tagging that's going on? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. If you deface somebody's property, that's a crime. So the this should become if the owner of that property makes a report or not. The difficult thing is if they don't make a report, the tagging with a graffiti, it still stays there. It's a blight on the it's a blight on the neighborhood. It looks ugly. But if there's no if there's no complainant, it's difficult for us to do any, to take any like criminal measures against that, right? But as far as graffiti itself, yes, it's definitely a crime. We encourage everybody to report it and to prosecute. Neighbors, if you see anything, if you know of anybody who does that kind of stuff, a lot of times it's those little tips that will lead us to a certain individual who likes to do that kind of stuff. Usually they're in their teens. That will help close a lot of the cases. So it's highly encouraged that people do report graffiti whenever they see it.
All right, Lieutenant, I don't see any other.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. I don't see any other raised hands. So thank you, Lieutenant. We're going to go next to City Monthly Reports.
Take care. Hello.
Okay, going now to Room Number Three, Letter A, Senator Kellif Kanaga, Representative. Anyone from the Senator's office? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'm not hearing anyone. So we're going next to Representative Andrew Tukuyagare, NB.
Good evening, Board members, members of the community. Representative Andrew Tukuyagare here. So we adjourned the regular session about a month ago. And what I have in front of you, members, is my latest newsletter. It did hit mailboxes within the last few weeks to all registered voters within District Twenty-two, primarily, which is primarily Manoa, but also does include Makali Moiliili as well as Talas. So you'll see highlights of what I feel are major bills that we passed this past session. And rather than just give you folks a list of the bills that we passed, I do always make it a point to let everyone know what my position is on these bills. I think it, you know, that's the least I can do. It's what I owe you as your representative to be transparent about my thoughts and decision-making process. So you'll see that the bills do indicate whether I support it or oppose these bills in question. On the other side, you'll see some of the grant aid funding and capital improvement projects we were able to secure through the state budget that our district. And lastly, on the back, there is a QR code, even though we adjourned again a month ago, and we're about six or seven months away from our next regular session, you know, the work is already underway to prepare for the twenty-sixth legislative session. So we are soliciting community input. So if you can scan the QR code on the back page, it'll send you to a survey, probably just take you two or three minutes to let me know how you feel about a lot of the top-of-mind issues impacting our district. The governor has already signed about half of the three hundred bills that we sent up to him. There is, he is constitutionally required to give us a list of bills he intends to veto by June twenty-fourth. And then we'll decide at that point if there's any bills worth coming back into session to do an override. And just as a reminder, it does require a two-thirds vote in both the House and the Senate. So it is a pretty high bar. But again, we'll have to wait and see what bills he sends to us that indicates he might veto it. So with that, I know that a late start tonight, so I'll just stop there and see if there are any questions. Thank you, Chair.
All right, any questions or comments for Representative? Member Watson, go ahead.
Yes.
So the governor, all the bills that were sent to him, he asked till June twenty-fourth to give you a list of what he's going to veto?
What he intends to veto.
What he intends to veto.
So sometimes they'll put a bill on that list and he'll ultimately decide not to veto it. But if there's a chance he's going to veto it, he's required to notify us.
In case you want to call a special assessment and spend our taxpayer money on that, right?
It's not part of the democratic process, but if we do that, we would come back for a one-day session on July ninth.
And some of the things relating like to fireworks, I think that our politicians and our governor and our mayor and our people just need to bite the bullet and do what's right and ban fireworks and ban firecrackers and set up more fireworks displays. And we don't have the pollution of all the red paper in the street and the sulfur smoke. And it affects people's health and people who have respiratory problems. And culturally, you don't want to do that because you want to get reelected. I think all politicians think about that. Because in our culture, they value this popping fireworks, okay? And it's just not okay. So it's like, how can you talk about we need an Office of Sustainability and Resiliency and Clean Water and Clean Air? And then allow fireworks and sulfur smoke to just pollute everything? And you can't
Okay, we're going to jump for time.
I think you can't control it. And you can't just ban aerials and this and that. And I think you guys need to step up to the plate and do the hard thing.
Okay, yeah, so I know, you know, most fireworks are technically legal. The problem has been with enforcement. So we did pass several bills this year to address that, whether setting up like an underground sting, like a sting operation. We lowered the threshold to consider part of the challenge has been that they haven't been able to prosecute because the burden of proof has been really high. You didn't need a police officer to visually, you know, see the firework being lit and set off. So we're trying to make it easier for people to be prosecuted. But I agree with you. I mean, you know, I don't think there's any cultural benefits to what we see now, these bombs. And, you know, I'm a pet owner myself, and I know that, you know, every year I worry about this as well. But I think we're giving law enforcement some tools.
Is short officers, and they have no time to chase down people setting off fireworks. They got important stuff to do. So I think that's what we need to do is just ban them and then have great fireworks displays and
Okay, Member Watson.
Any other questions or comments for please come to the microphone? Yep, that one.
Thank you. I just had a question. I run a nonprofit, a local nonprofit, small business. I think you're aware of it. I was wondering with the administration that's now taking place, how are ways that we can get funding? And how as a small business are we affected? Just curious.
Thank you for the question. You know, every year we do have what's called the Grant Aid Process where nonprofits can apply. I believe you did as well. Unfortunately, you know, just the financial situation we had this year, we couldn't we couldn't be as generous as we've been in the past. So a lot of, you know, noble causes, we just couldn't secure funding for. But we did pass a bill this year. I don't recall the bill number offhand, but we set aside an extra fifty million that's going to go to the Office of Community Services within the Department of Labor. So they can try to backfill some of these things that have come up since these grants were awarded. This, you know, people apply by early January and results don't come out until April. And, you know, so much has changed since the Trump administration went into office in DC. So we did set aside fifty million. I believe they're working on criteria right now, so interested nonprofits, maybe even small businesses can apply for funding. That might be able to help you out.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Representative? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you for the report and thank you for helping us out earlier when things were locked up. Thanks for calling the principal to open up for us.
Of course. Okay, see you folks in August. Thank you.
Okay, going next to Item C, University of Hawaii, Manoa Updates. So Elmer told me the email earlier that he was out sick and he wouldn't have a formal report. So he let me know that to just expect a full report from him in August. So we'll pass that. Going next to Item D, Governor Josh Green's Representative Lacey Goshi, please go ahead.
Everyone, so just a couple of updates from the governor's newsletter. The governor's administration was able to work with the state legislature, climate action team, and other statewide partners to enact the Green Fee, which addresses the critical need to build resiliency against the impacts of climate change by providing a stable source of funding for environmental stewardship, hazard mitigation, and sustainable tourism. And another update I wanted to provide is that coconut rhinoceros beetle treatment efforts are ongoing on Oahu. And residents are asked to check their compost and mulch piles, which are our main breeding ground for CRB. And you can report possible CRB, especially in uninvested areas, to the Hawaii Department of Agriculture. For more updates, you can see the governor's newsletter, which I've also linked in the chat. And I'll stay on for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the governor's representative? Anyone online? Oh, Member Watson, go ahead.
Hi, my question is about the biosecurity bill that the Invasive Species Council submitted. I think a bill passed to try to give them more money and more power. And I wondered where the governor stood on that. And you know, I guess I'm hoping that that he does not sign that bill because the Invasive Species Council has failed to keep out any invasive species in the state of Hawaii. And you know, they failed the objectives for which they were created. And so I think that we should get rid of the Invasive Species Council and that that should go just to the Department of Ag to be handled because they just have not kept out any invasive species at all. So I don't think we should make them I have the biosecurity and throwing money at them and getting them to have air-conditioned buildings and whatever and look for invasive pests is a good spend of money. So that was just what I and others in our community want to say.
Sorry, Member Watson, just jumping in for time. Lacey Goshi, can you answer the question if you have an answer or anything?
Yes, I don't know what the governor's stance is on that biosecurity council bill, but I can check with his policy team and then also pass along your comments to his team as well.
Okay, anyone else with comments or questions for the governor's office? I don't see anyone online or in person. Okay, thank you, Lacey, for coming down and for waiting for things to get settled earlier, and we'll see you in August. Okay, moving next to Item E, Congressman Ed Casey's representative. Do we have representative from the congressman? Going once, going twice, not seeing or hearing anyone. Okay. Going next to City Monthly Reports, Item A, Board of Water Supply, Dominic Diaz. Is Board of Water Supply with us tonight? Not seeing them. Next, we're going to Item B, Mayor Rick Langiardi's office. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Gavin Thornton from the Office of Economic Revitalization. The biggest update that I have for you all is the town hall that's happening tomorrow night at Kalani High School Cafeteria. Supposed to be the closest proximity town hall for Manoa, Waikiki, Waikai, and Kahala. It's really a great opportunity to ask questions directly to the mayor and directly to department heads or their deputies. So really encourage you to go. This is the last in the series of town halls this year. Just a great opportunity. Other than that, welcome questions you have now. Think you'd go talk directly to folks that actually know something tomorrow.
The town hall meeting is what time?
Oh, it's six-thirty. Thank you. I do know the answer to that.
Kalani High School Auditorium?
Kalani High School Cafeteria. On your, on your left.
Okay, any questions, any other questions or comments for the mayor's representative? Right, go ahead.
Yeah, going back to some bread and butter things in Manoa. I noticed, you know, just driving along, you know, like Punahoe, East Manoa, right here, Manoa Road. For some reason, there's an awful lot of street signs that are incredibly faded and almost to the point they're illegible. I mean, I just astounding number. It's not like one or two. But I think that's a city responsibility, if I'm not mistaken. But anyway, I was wondering if this the funny thing is, I do notice there are some signs that have a sticker. Someone either inspected it because there's some sort of a date and on, but then there's others that don't have that, but then they're like very, very faded to the point that they're almost worthless to have up there. So I just wanted to ask if the city is aware of that? And if so, when are they planning to replace them, you know, so that we have new signs that? Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. And let me just make sure that I have the road. So it's East Manoa Road and
East Manoa, Manoa and Manoa Road, Punahoe, Punaho Street. Yeah, just a lot of on the major streets through Manoa, they are faded. They're like totally faded. And it's getting to the point now, there's so many of them. I just was wondering, because I know that other street signs, there's a new sticker. So someone's inspecting some of those signs, but anyway.
Great, thank you. I don't know what the protocol is, but I will definitely get it to folks that can get you an answer and get attention to the issue.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the mayor's representative? I don't see anyone else. All right, thanks for coming in. We'll see you again in August.
Sorry, just a point of order. So this is a reminder for people when they come up. Please address your questions and comments to the chair. Wait until the chair calls on you to be recognized and then speak. And also again, just when you come up to the microphone, introduce yourself with your name. This is going on public record. So we would like to really know who's telling us all these comments or has questions for the speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Zane. Going next to Item C, City Councilor Scott Nishimoto, our representative. Anyone from the councilman's office?
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sophia and I'm sitting in for Councilmember Nishimoto tonight. When I left the office today, Councilmember Heath were still in the budget hearing. I dropped our weekly e-bast link in our office contact info in the chat. And I'm happy to pass along any questions, comments, or concerns to Councilmember that anyone might have. Thank you.
Member John, go ahead.
My question is about Lori Avenue on sidewalks. Why, why doesn't Councilmember Nishimoto put in something so then we can get some sidewalks on at least Lori Avenue? I have seen and I have pictures of this person in a wheelchair going down Lori Avenue because there's no sidewalks on Lori Avenue. I have, I don't have pictures, but I have, I even saw a mother pushing a child in a wheelchair on Lori Avenue because there's no sidewalks. I would like Councilmember to put in some kind of budget for at least a sidewalk on Lori Avenue because it's such a main road. And I know students from No'ailani walk on the, on the streets too because there's no sidewalks. Thank you.
Well, I think probably this is the appropriate time to answer that question because this issue was brought up last meeting. And Councilmember staffer Heath Williams referred us to the Oahu Pedestrian Plan, a colossal document documenting where the priorities are for putting sidewalks. And in this document, which I waded through, it says that there's an average of twenty-one people killed and four hundred and ninety-nine people injured on city streets every year. And so what the plan does is it prioritizes those streets where all these people are getting hit and killed, which we would have to concede is a higher priority than streets where people are not being hit and killed. So one of the things our committee is talking about is what resolution we could make perhaps to increase funding, as you suggest, to so move streets up on that priority list. But as Heath told us last time, if your current street is not real high on the priority list, then the option is a special assessment district where you have to pay for it yourself. And so people would have to decide how bad do they want a sidewalk? Bad enough for a few people to step out in front of cars and get killed? Hey, then I'll move way up in the priority list. But assuming that that's not a rational proposal of how to move this up, then we either make a resolution saying we urge the city to increase its budget for building sidewalks so that more of those streets would get done. Or if our street that we want sidewalks on is still too low, then we have to say, how bad do we want it? And then the special assessment district is the option we have. But there's a huge number of streets in that, in that plan.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Councilman's representative? Wait, and sorry, Sophia, did you want to respond to that or anything?
Um, yes, I, Heath usually is the staffer that comes to the Manoa Neighbor Board meetings. So I'm gonna definitely share all of the information with him and with Councilmember tomorrow when I get back to the office.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see or hear any other questions or comments for the councilman. Is there anyone online? Nope, no one online. Okay, thanks, Sophia. We'll see you or someone else from the councilman's office in August.
Thank you.
All right, going to Room Number Five, Attorney Business, Item A, Updates on Manoa Banning Court and Aria Land. I haven't heard anything. Does anyone else have updates on Manoa Banning Court and/or Aria Land? Okay, not seeing any hands or anyone shouting anything out, so I guess we have no news on that. Going next to Updates on Olivei Flooded Mitigation, that's normally Elton's item. But does anyone else right now, we don't have Elton with us, does anyone else have updates on the Olivei Flooded Mitigation situation? All right, again, I see no hands. So going now to Item C, Updates on the Primary Urban Center Development Plan. Do we have any updates on that?
Um, I can just say that the PUCDP group had issued their reports and they had recommended that no building or density increase or building condos or any number, senior facilities, whatever. Mauka of Wilder occur because of Manoa and because of the two roads coming in and out of Manoa. And it would appear that our elected leadership isn't listening to them because that was their recommendation and yet there still is a push to backfill and build condos in Manoa. And so I don't understand that discrepancy since the city paid, you know, the consultant, CDP, DP, right? I mean, the PUCDP, big bucks to figure this out and draft this thing, and then they're not listening to it. So I don't understand that. And neither does a lot of other folks. So I don't know if that goes to Scott Nishimoto, City Councilor, or goes to mayor or governor. And it's just kind of perplexing. At least a lot of folks have mentioned that and wanted me to bring that up, so I did.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Watson. And we do have Representative Garrett and a person from Nishimoto's office with us tonight, so I'll just ask them to note that. Any other questions or comments on the topic of, oh, Member John?
I have one. I saw on the news that on Wilder University, they're, they're changing a four-lane I have one. I saw on the news that on Wilder, um, University, they're, they're changing a four lane street to a three lane street. This is between, you know, where you go down the street to the quarry? All the way to St. Louis, they're changing it from a four lane street, two ways, two lanes on each side. They're making it one lane and one, yeah, that's, that's the question I have. Why are they doing that? Because I understand that they won't need bike lanes, but couldn't they do it right next to the sidewalk instead of changing it from a four lane, two lanes going each way to one lane and then one lane for the left turn? That's all they're having right now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding primary urban center development plan? Okay, going next to board business, item A, filling of vacancies. There is one, or excuse me, three vacancies in Subdistrict Four. If anyone wants to fill in for the remaining hour of the meeting that we have.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah, the, considering that those vacancies have just been filled by election starting at our next meeting in August, it would only be for the rest of this meeting, as you just pointed out. So if anyone walked in here packing their proof of residency and their utility bills and all that other stuff and wants to be on this board for the rest of this meeting, they could jump up, but I'm kind of skeptical that, that anyone needs that and perhaps we could just move on.
I, I will note that there is still one vacancy for Subdistrict Four. All the other vacancies are filled up. But even with past election, which we'll talk about more later, we have one vacancy in Subdistrict Four. So if we have one person in that area, they can come by next meeting, we can add them. Okay, moving on to item B, discussion on University Lab School and the proposed campus town project. This came up for a while last meeting. There was also a community meeting a couple of weeks ago. So was there anyone here from, you know, electeds or city or state or the public who wanted to talk about the University Lab School or the campus town of proposed development? Member Watson?
Well, I think lots of folks in our valley and lots of folks that attend the university want to keep it a green, open space. They want, and our board has requested that the university issue the UH Lab School a lease so that they can trust that they're not going to be asked to move for a number of years. And the university refused to do that. We passed a resolution asking for that. And it would give everybody reassurance. But whatever they end up doing with the development of that, and I think they are going to develop it, even though they say they're not, I think they're going to. And they want it to be condos and shops and places for people to spend money they don't have on stuff they don't need kind of thing. And condos and blocking the view planes and taking away the green space. And I think no. And other people in Manoa are concerned about that too. And people at the university are concerned about that too. That Kakaako and Waikiki, and if they build the pedestrian bridge, it's just going to spread into Manoa Valley and consume that wonderful space by the university. And, and I kind of think that that's where they're heading when they're developing the other properties to have little restaurants and cafes and concrete and concrete and concrete and fake Hawaiian plants on that corner of university and, and King. And I think they just want that to extend into the university. And our community is really concerned about that. A lot of people have contacted me and they're worried about that.
Okay, thanks. I do have some comment on the issue myself, but first I'll just ask any other questions or comments relating to the development plan or University Lab School? And we have a person in person coming up to the mic.
Evening. I'm Mike Meyer. I am a parent of a ULS, two ULS students. And I just had a couple of comments to make and one request for the board. I am not a Manoa resident. I'm a Windward Side resident, but all the years I spent as a UH Manoa student, I'm a proud grad, class ninety-three. I feel your pain as far as traffic goes and congestion and parking. I myself spent five years of my college career trying to find street parking around UH Manoa. So it kind of boggles my mind that they would consider developing this parcel for commercial use rather than putting in parking, which I assume most of the commuting students would rather have than an additional restaurant to eat at. If you weren't aware, I've been hearing things about the ULS university relationship. And my understanding is they're only required to give us one year's notice as far as our lease being up. So that's very concerning to me as a parent with kids who still have some time in the, in the ULS system. And how are you gonna move a school, even a small school of that size, within a year? Let alone trying to find a place to move to. If anyone in the audience online or present was at the May fifteenth, May fourteenth meeting, it was quite interesting and it's very clear that majority of Manoa residents are opposed to this project, this development. There were a good number of ULS families and students at the meeting as well. And we just, we, not only do we want our school to succeed and continue to produce the great product that it's been producing for the last hundred years. This, we're graduating our seventy-fifth high school class this year, by the way. So seventy-five years of producing excellent students. But we're concerned about the neighborhood immediately around the parcel. I'd like to point out that there have been a number of food establishments that have bombed. And, you know, if you can't keep a Burger King open on a college campus with starving students or hungry students or poor students, how are you gonna open a restaurant and redevelop a commercial space there and expect it to thrive and, and do well? I do have a request for the board and I don't know the most appropriate way for this.
I'm just gonna jump in. You are going a bit over time, but you can make the request and then we'll go to the next person.
Sure. Thank you for that. We are concerned, there's a loose group of parents of ULS students who are concerned about the development proposal. And we're quite concerned that the traffic study is gonna be done when there's no school in session. So I would like to propose the board draft a resolution requesting the University of Hawaii conduct this traffic study, which they're gonna be required to conduct, as I understand it, to proceed with the permitting, et cetera. I think they should do it, they should be required to do it when all schools are in session. All of them in all valley schools, all the public schools, all the private schools. Otherwise, we're not gonna get accurate information. Thank you.
I saw a recent hand from Member Moylan.
I just wanted to ask a question of the speaker. Has the university given the lab school the one-year notice or not?
No, they have not.
Okay, so you're good for at least one year from now? If they did it tomorrow?
Yeah, can I comment on that?
Sure.
I also attend, attended a town hall meeting in Pearl City a couple of weeks ago and the UH president stood up there and said that there is no plan. I don't know about you, but I see surveyors on campus and they're knocking down buildings and, you know, they're doing these informational meetings. Kind of seems to me like there's a plan. They're obviously PBR Hawaii that is doing the marketing. They're, to me, obviously pushing for commercial development there and retail space. If you were to sit through the informational meetings, they tell you on the PowerPoint slide, Chalke Center has a move date, which was move of August of this year. At the first meeting, it was move in twenty twenty-six. So that's already moved up. And then the College of Ed is moving within this upcoming school year to the Manoa, UH Manoa main campus. And then it's, next slide, please. And the ULS parents are sitting there thinking, so what about us? And the intent was to move past that discussion, plain to me. So I'm hopeful that the university president will recognize what a value this school does to the community and what a travesty developing that parcel into commercial space would be for the community.
I keep hoping that you just move over to the St. Francis site. Kill two birds with one stone. Win-win.
Any additional comment or, or anything regarding the University Lab School or proposed campus town project? Member Watson?
Hi, isn't that, wait, didn't you meet with Lori Lum about that project?
I did. Let me talk about that.
I, I do briefly. The developer hired Lori Lum. Lori Lum is a political lobbyist.
No personal tax, yeah.
Out of Wantanabi Ing Law Firm. And so she, she was hired by them. So they must have a plan for their development and her job is to kick it through the goalposts. So she'll contact board members and members of the community and get their input and find out who's friend and who's foe. And her job is to kick the project through the goalposts. So she's already on board with that. And when she comes to make a presentation near the end, when everything is finalized, she will load this room with supporters of it and the board will believe that the whole world supports the development and wanna do it. And so she met with Chair Nagaji and she'll probably contact each individual board member and try to figure out if they're for or against it and, and, and try to manipulate them into supporting.
Okay, we're, we're not gonna accuse anyone of manipulating anything. But, okay, but yes, as Member Watson mentioned, I did meet with Lori Lum. It was late last year, I think in, was it October or November last year? At the time, she basically said that the project was being discussed. They were gonna solicit community feedback, which is what they did with the past month or two. At the time, she said that our board should expect a full presentation in August. But then I ran into her again at the, the town hall a couple of weeks ago. And she told me at the town hall that it's not gonna be in August. In light of the feedback they received at the town hall and some other places, she said that they're gonna be pushing, pushing it back to September or later in terms of giving our board a, a presentation on whatever they're doing. So that's my update on that situation. And, go ahead. Oh, come to the mic, come to the mic.
Date be made public, will the presentation be open to the public?
So, yes, it, it, the presentation will be held here in September or October or later.
Would it be during a board meeting?
It'll be, it'll be during a board meeting and there'll be notice and everything, so it'll be open to the public. So I'll just note, because it sounds like discussion's winding down. I am planning to send a letter to a PBR as chair. I'm just gonna basically reiterate our past position for the resolution we took a couple of years ago, stating our board's position. And I, I don't think we have time to do a resolution because our next board meeting is in August. And by that time, schools will already be in session. So I will include in the letter that I'm sending, reiterating our position that they should give ULS an agreement to stay at the site, that they should also do their traffic study during a month or a week when all schools are in session. So I'll pass that along to PBR and their people. Do we have any final discussion on the project or the University Lab School? Okay, not seeing or hearing any more. So we're going now to discussion on dogs and parks, item C. So the City Department of Parks and Recreation is considering ways to make local parks more dog friendly. And to further its outreach on the issue, the city is asking the various neighborhood boards to discuss the matter with their communities. And the, and the Department of Parks and Rec said they would appreciate hearing back from our board by August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five. And they specifically identified in their email, um, three parks in our district. Common LA Park, where dogs are prohibited, Wilder Avenue Mini Park, where dogs are prohibited, and Manoa Valley District Park perimeter area, where dogs are allowed if they're on a leash. So do we have any discussion regarding the dog parks? Members in?
Just for clarification, when it says for Manoa Valley District Park perimeter area, where is this perimeter area? Are we talking about the area by Manoa Stream? Kind of in the corner of the park where there are some benches or in some tables? Are we talking closer to where the, the baseball field is or somewhere else in the park by the tennis courts?
Uh, the email did not specify.
Chair? At Manoa District Park, dogs are allowed anywhere on leash.
On leash.
You can walk your dog wherever you want, pick up your dog poop. But these other parks apparently don't have dogs.
So they want, they want us to talk about basically whether we should allow dogs on leashes in these areas or, or change dog rules otherwise. And I got, I got, um,
Well, certain parks don't allow any dogs.
Member Zane still has the, the mic if you.
Sorry, I just wanted to make one comment about that, that regarding the, regarding dogs at Manoa District Park, I would like to actually support or communicate to the City Department of Parks and Recre, Department of Parks and Recreation to consider having a portion of Manoa Valley District Park to be able to be fenced in so that way dogs can roam around without leash in a particular area.
Well, I would be certain, there is a recipe for that and how to do that. And I'll work with you if you want, Robert, on that. To have an off-leash dog park. And there are steps for what we have to do. And I think Manoa District Park has the space and they should have that. And, and I, I can just talk to you about that. I know the houses around, along Lowry Avenue, for instance, might have to agree to that because that area might be between that and the ball fields for them. But they might like, really like that because then they won't have the homeless and other people camping there as they are now, which is a real problem in their backyards. They might like a dog park that, that closes at dusk, right, kind of thing? As instead, because you won't have people prowling around your houses and people living in your backyard. So I'll work with you on that if you want, going forward.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So it sounds good. Members Watson and Zane can talk amongst themselves outside of meeting and they can get back to us with whatever they decide on. Do we have anyone else, community members who want to talk about the, the dog park, park issue? Okay, and this'll, this'll come up again in, in the August meetings. We'll, we'll have further discussion on the dog parks at that time. Moving next to item D, discussion on traffic circles in the Manoa five-way inner. And th, th, this is largely due to the resolution that Member Moylan presented, so I'll turn the mic over to him now.
Yes, I wasn't sure why that, that would be a separate agenda item. But should I be presuming to go on to E or D and E? Because we're gonna have a discussion on it anyway, right? So as many of you know, we have a proactive solutions committee that's trying to come up with some ideas that we'd like to push rather than waiting for some change to be proposed and lining up against it, as we tend to do. And one of the things we've been discussing is dealing with that five-way intersection up at Manoa Road, Lowry Avenue and Oahu Avenue. And there's a few other places in town that have five-way intersections. When that happens, it's a huge bottleneck because, you know, only one way can go through at a time. And I live about a block away from there, so I've seen the huge traffic congestion we have there during commute hours in the morning and in the evening. And people all get up to the five ways and they kind of look around and they aren't sure whose turn it is to go next. And so it doesn't feel totally safe and it absolutely feels like a big clog. And of course, the standard solution to this worldwide is a traffic circle. Or as they call it in New England, a rotary, or in the UK, a roundabout. In which case, nobody has a stop sign and people just get in there and drive around and exit when they need to. You can make it really nice. You can make them landscaped because no one's gonna drive across the landscaping. So we discussed this in our committee. But unfortunately, at our last committee meeting, only two of the five members were present. So rather than just wait another month for possible wordsmithing, we said, all right, let's just bring it tonight and see if it was the sentiment of the full board to either send it in as we have it or revise it and send it in or send it back to the committee for major revision or say, we don't wanna do this. I mean, I know this sounds like the four things that can happen to your scientific paper if you submit it to a journal. So that's sort of where I'm coming from. Publish as is, publish with minor revision, publish with major revision, or do not publish. And so I can read it to you and then the board can decide, you know, the public can tell us what they think and the board can decide whether we would like to take any action on it or send it back to the committee. So here it is. It already has had two slight modifications based on input from other committee members. So this would be a resolution urging the Honolulu City, City Council to install a traffic circle. Whereas the Manoa Neighborhood Board Number Seven is a citizens advisory board whose purpose is to increase and assure. Whereas the Manoa Neighborhood Board number seven is a citizens advisory board, whose purpose is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government, and whereas effective participation includes identifying mechanisms for mitigating city problems, particularly in the neighborhood, and whereas traffic congestion is a pervasive city issue, and whereas the greenhouse gases emitted by gasoline-powered cars are the cause of the biggest problem in the world, global warming, and when automobile trips take longer, more greenhouse gases are emitted, and whereas congestion is particularly acute at the five-way intersection of Manoa Road, Oahu Avenue, and Lowry Avenue, with continual slowdowns due to driver confusion as to whose turn it is to enter the intersection, and frequent near collisions due to that confusion, and whereas traffic circles, also known as rotaries in New England and roundabouts in the UK, are a well-established mechanism for improving traffic flow through intersections of multiple streets, and whereas the city of Honolulu has installed a successful traffic circle at the intersection of Ka'ia Moku Street and Haylulu Street, even though it is a standard four-way intersection, and whereas the condition on the pavement on many city streets is surprisingly poor, given the near constant temperature in the city, and the longer cars sit waiting to enter an intersection, the more stress they put on that pavement. Therefore, be it resolved that the Manoa Neighborhood Board respectfully asks the city council to install a landscaped and possibly raised traffic circle at the five corners intersection specified above, and to consider making similar installations wherever traffic congestion occurs, because more than four streets join at the same intersection. And then the usual boilerplate of be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to each member of the city council and all neighborhood boards.
All right, any, uh, discussion? Member Chong?
I, I would love to see a circle like that, however, that means that there are going to be people who's going to be losing their property to make this circle. There is no way you can make a circle in that small area. You would have to take over, like, Waioli Tea Room and all the property, the first property right next to the intersection. There's absolutely no space for that circle.
Any other, uh, discussion? Member Zane?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, one thing about this that did come up in the past, actually, um, Member Chong was alluding to, was concerns about how much space there is for vehicles to go through the five-way intersection if they put in a circle there. As much as I would actually love and support the idea for a circle, the problem is that, to remind, that, it was a reminder that discussion came up, and I believe there were concerns regarding larger vehicles such as buses and trucks that have to go through that area, and the difficulty for them to navigate that particular intersection if a circle was installed there. That's the primary issue and the main impediment towards going full speed on that traffic circle idea.
Member Watson?
Well, I remember that, Robert, from other discussions in, in our board, and for fire trucks and ambulances and other big vehicles that have to get in, it, a traffic circle would be a real problem, and, and there's, there, there may not be, like Diane said, enough space for that. But what I, um, would like to see that we used to have, and I've mentioned it before, but the city just kind of blows it off, um, we used to have stop signs that said, "Five-way stop," instead of "All-way stop." So when you come up off of Oahu Avenue, like, if you've come up Uno and, and you're by the five-way, you cannot see the, the, the street coming in from Lowry. You don't know it's there. You think it's a four-way stop when you're sitting there. You cannot see the other road. And so if, if the sign said, "Five-way stop," everybody would know it's a five-way stop, and there's five cars that got to take turns to cross, and I think it's safer and better. And, and somehow, when the city replaces signs, they just made a generic "All-way stop," so they can use it wherever they want, over the whole island. But I think it does a real disservice to that corner, because people don't know it's five roads all intersecting. And I think it starts there. That's a step in the right direction. And, um, we have heard from emergency responders, and, Robert, you probably remember this, that there aren't very many accidents there, and there's not fatalities there. It is not a dangerous intersection on the books. And so as much as we think that it's problematic, um, it's, it's really not been problematic in the terms of documentation of what you could use to leverage the city to have to do something about it, right? It's not there. So, um-
Okay, just trying to wait for time. I see we have a raised hand from Member Lumen. Hold on, hold on, we're getting your mic, we're getting your mic.
Hi, Clyde Lumen here. What I've seen on traffic circles in Europe and other places is at least two lanes. Because if you enter and you're going to go around the other side, you just have everybody entering on one lane. It's a total, hey Kai, sorry. Uh, it's a nightmare. So you do need much more land to have two, you can't just have one lane with exits, and, anyway. That's all I have to say.
Uh, Member, uh, Member Moylan?
I just wanted to wait to hear all the comments and then respond.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone online who want to talk about the traffic circle issue? Any, any feedback or any comments? Not hearing anyone back?
Thank you, I had a comment about the traffic circle discussion. Um, if you are not aware, we have, uh, ongoing project in Kailua with the big roundabout in the, like, Kani- uh, Lani Kai, Kailua Beach area. And it has just dragged on and on and on. And they had it open for all-way traffic, and then they said, oops, we made a mistake, so we got to tear up the road again. So it was open, I want to say, in, in March, and everybody's using it. And then they said, oh, there's a mistake, we got to shut everything down again. And now we're back to the traffic being a total mess. Um, my comment is, with all due respect, the two-lane roundabouts that I've driven through in Europe are designed for speed to go around the bout. I don't know about you, but at a five-way intersection, and I'm from Kailua, but I've driven through the f- five-way intersection, and it can be pretty scary. Not everybody has the same driving ability. So I think a one-lane roundabout that is for passenger vehicles only might fit there. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm just making comments on what I've observed. So the other comment I wanted to give advice to the Manoa Neighborhood is, um, I wouldn't consider a lot of landscaping, because then you've got more irrigation, and the more decorative it is, the more expensive it's going to be. Maybe that's not a factor, but the longevity of the project is a factor that you guys don't want to deal with, like what we're dealing with now. So, thank you.
Uh, Member Moylan?
Okay, so first of all, uh, roundabouts on one-lane roads exist all over the place. They're standard. In fact, we even have one in Honolulu already that I've seen. Uh, so it is not the case that they can only be used for two-lane roads. In fact, if they could be used for three-lane roads, I'd love to see one going at, um, Capialani Boulevard, Date Street, and Kamoku Street. This giant five-way asterisk intersection with terrible, terrible delays going through the, the light there. But we should start small. Um, there, I've seen them in the town I used to live in get put in just as traffic calming devices, which I think is probably why they have the one that exists, uh, in town now, because it's just a standard four-way intersection. So I think they put that in there to slow traffic down through there. Um, as far as how much space it takes, none of us actually knows. And so I'm hearing speculation that might be a problem. It sounds like what I need to do is go talk to the traffic engineers and find out if there is enough space. We shouldn't be making a decision based on incomplete information or fear. We should find out, is that really practical there? Okay, if not, we don't do it. If it is, then we should consider it. Um, the landscaping suggestion came from a member to my left. And I think, uh, in that part of our neighborhood where I live, considering it rains every single day, I don't think we would ever need to irrigate such a thing artificially. It's just a question of preference as to whether you want a raised little cement round thing, like they had at the other one in town, or whether you'd like a nice round patch of grass, you know, uh. Frankly, I don't, I'm not going to die on that hill, but, you know, I'm sure people have a preference. What I'd just like to see is traffic flow through that intersection. I can also add that as far as perceived safety, uh, it's quite frightening to go through there on a bicycle, which I've done many times. Because it's clear that a lot of those cars have no idea what to do with each other, and then a bike comes in there, and they don't have, how to deal with that either. It's, you know, I, I do remember doing some history on this and finding out that, uh, what Member Watson said was true, that they looked at this once as a safety issue. But just like the sidewalks on Lowry, not enough people had died to cause it to be generated as a safety issue, so it was tabled. But, uh, what our committee is suggesting is it's more like a traffic mitigation issue. Uh, and, and, uh, to increase the flow of traffic through there and have the side benefit of feeling safer. So, I mean, it sounds like what I need to do is go find the hard information on how big it would be. Because if it turns out it's actually not possible, then, then there's no point in discussing it more. But if it is possible, as I suggest, having seen ones on streets much smaller than that, then I can bring this back to you.
So why don't we just run this back to the committee and find out the facts?
That's what I'm proposing.
Talk, yeah, talk to the police department, the fire department, see if they could get big vehicles in there. If they can't, it's a no-go. If there's not enough room, it's a no-go.
Ellen, yeah, sorry, I, since Member Boylan was the one who, point of order. Since Member Boylan was the one who introduced the resolu- proposed resolution, he's withdrawing it. So I think the po- the subject has moved. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong on that?
Are you withdrawing it?
I, I would ju- I-
Or asking us-
I never made a motion, I just read it.
Are you asking us to pass it without a vote or without a motion?
No, no, no. I wanted to hear what everyone's opinion was, and if it sounded like it was ready to go, then we could make a motion. But it doesn't sound like it. It sounds like it should go back to committee, and, uh, we'll work on it a little more, bring it back at a future date. If, if it turns out to be workable.
Okay, any final comments for Member Moylan?
My name is Brenda Lamb. Um, if you can do a traffic circle and not cut down any of the monkey paw trees, because I don't think that'll fly at Manoa if those trees get damaged. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other, uh, final comments from Member Moylan?
Uh, my name is Tyler Shimabukuro. I was just curious, uh, I know you mentioned, like, scientific journals and, you know, the process, uh, but, uh, do you have a, like, tentative schedule? Because, you know, if you were to implement this project, people would have to drive different routes, correct? And if, like, the gentleman back there said it's going to take years, then being a Manoa resident, I wouldn't like that personally. I'm just curious.
Sure, uh, certainly, since we don't have anything hard to propose yet, a time schedule would just be, uh, our imagination. But what I remember seeing is when they were put in, in the town I used to live in, uh, it didn't, it didn't take very long at all, a couple of months, you know.
But that's not Hawaii.
That's right, and it's also not as big a project as that one up there in Kailua. You know, that's a, a much more heavily trafficked area, a lot more people pounding through there on the way to the beach. Uh, I think that disrupts traffic more than what ours would do. Um, but again, I don't want to state an opinion based on zero facts, so I will try to find facts for you.
That's fair, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay, it doesn't look like we have anyone. Um, going next, item F, approval of the Wednesday, May 7th, 2025 meeting minutes. We have any discussion, any motions to be made? Member Moylan? Sorry, you're making eye contact, I thought you were. A- any discussion?
Okay, move approval of the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Do we, do we have a second? Wait, Member Chong?
On the minutes, there's a mistake. It's that, um, under, I guess that's number nine announcement, says mid PAC, with PAC with a P-A-C-K. It should, it's, in, anyway, it should say Mid-Pacific Institute. It shouldn't be mid PAC.
Okay, that, that's non-substantive, so we, we don't need amendment for that, but I'll, I'll note to Anson that he should, uh, fix that.
And it's written twice.
Okay. Uh, so we have a motion from Moylan to do that, uh, non, to do the, um, to approve the minutes. Remember, Chong pointed out the, uh, fix that needs to be made, I'll, I'll ask Anson to do that, or Spencer, as the case may be. Uh, do we have a second to Member Moylan's motion to approve the minutes with non-substantive amendments? Okay, um, so the motion was made by, by Member Moylan, it was seconded by Member Zane. Do we have any objections or any, or any other discussion of, uh, the motion? Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing and hearing no objection, it passes by general consent. Uh, and now we're going to item G, report from Product Solutions Committee, again with Member Moylan.
Yes, this will be a short report, because we already covered the one, uh, item brought to you. Uh, it was also, as I mentioned before, a meeting where only two committee members were there. So, uh, the two issues we discussed were the traffic circles and the sidewalks, which I already filled in, because we had, uh, previously been given that Oahu pedestrian pran- plan and went through it. And the only other thing we discussed was the recycle water possibility. Um, and it became clear that, that I didn't get ten people volunteering to go on the tour of the existing, uh, uh, recycle water facility, which is what they require. You have to have at least ten people. So, you know, I had put a solicitation at our last meeting, you know, anyone want to come with us and tour the recycle water facility? And a couple of people did, but it wasn't ten. So, uh, I think we're kind of stalled on that one for the moment, and that concludes the committee report.
Okay, any questions or comments from Member Moylan regarding his committee report? If so, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Okay, I see no one, so we are heading into community concerns. Um, item A, this is just other concerns, not otherwise listed, so it's pretty much open forum for people to talk about things that weren't on the agenda. Uh, any community concerns people want to bring up?
I, I just had one to share.
Yeah.
Can I, can I share one from-
Yes.
-our community? Um, about the albezia trees, what, what do we need to do so that albezia trees will be banned from the Aloe Water Shed and certainly through Manoa? So the ones that exist need to be taken out, and homeowners would be forbidden from planting albezia trees, because that's what clogged the stream that caused the flood? And how do we, as a community, get that to happen? Um, and so that's, that's what our community is asking, and does anybody know?
Does anyone have any, uh, response to, uh, Member Watson's issue regarding, uh, albezia? Anyone online? If so, please raise your hand. Brenda?
I'm, I'm on the board of Malama, Manoa, and we do have a committee, um, that removes albezia trees in the stream. So we have some very active members who are interacting with, um, the authorities about the albezia. But a lot of them are in lion arboretum's property.
On what?
On lion arboretum's property.
Yeah, but I mean, we need to get them out of the water shed entirely, or they can't.
Yeah, it, it, it is, yeah, it is an issue that we discuss often, and we do have a committee that addresses it.
Right, but-
Specifically for Manoa, yeah.
Well, yeah, but they can't do it all.
No, they can't. It's, it, it would take state Department of Agriculture or somebody to-
Kind of, uh, entity needs to come together to be able to do it. I was not one.
I believe it's the state, DLNR especially, Department of Land and Natural Resources. A lot of it's on the land that they control.
Okay, um, any concerns? We have the, uh, nonprofit group to present.
Uh, hello again, I'm Tyler Shimabukuro, this is my partner Riley Nakamura. Uh, thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today, and hello to everyone in the community as well. Um, so we are proposing, not really proposing, but wanted to just let everyone know that we are hoping to do a mural project at Manoa Park, and we just wanted to give you more information on, uh, what we plan to do. Mural project, yeah.
We are looking to do a mural project with, um, Valley District Park, um, also collaborating with Manoa Elementary School, possibly integrating this project with the, uh, the teachers and curriculum with the school going into the new year. Our timeline is possibly doing this in August and September. Um, I am Riley Nakamura, I am the artist of the project. We're working with Stealth, Healthy Steps Hawaii, which is Tyler Shimabukuro's nonprofit. We are both from Manoa, so this is a very, uh, special project for us, to be doing it where we grew up at. Um, this is to inspire students and foster a sense of pride and creativity, uh, and possibly making a welcoming beacon to all who enter. Um, not only me and him, but we're also collaborating with Kuliana Commercial Advisors, a good friend of ours, who helps us with the, um, ethical steps of the process. friend of ours who helps us with the ethical steps of the process, incorporating a lot of Hawaiian values that the DOE associates with as well in the Naho pena ao values.
Sorry, we thought there would be a projector, so we like made a whole presentation, but anyways, yeah, so I'm the co-founder of Healthy Steps Hawaii nonprofit focused on helping people in Hawaii live healthier lives. And the mural is something interesting to both of us because we hope to do it on this one building by the bathrooms by the baseball field. It's a Lions Club building and unfortunately, in recent years, it has become kind of rundown, you know, there's mold growing on it. It's just not, it's a sore sight for eyes. And we believe that by showcasing some of the origin stories of Manoa Valley, that we can not only help make the space more beautiful, but also help to educate people in the valley as well, which you know, many people aren't aware of. I was not aware of when we started this project. So that was just a little bit that we wanted to share, and if anybody has any questions, thoughts, or just anything they wanted to say to us, we'll be free after the meeting as well.
Okay, I have a couple of questions myself, but I'll ask if anyone else has questions or comments for our presenters. Member Zhang?
Is there a design that you already have?
Yes, yes, we have submitted three potential designs to the state already or the mayor's office of.
They have to decide.
Yes, they have to decide. So we came here today not really to ask for permission, but to just, you know, because you are all members of Manoa, we wanted to inform you that this is something we hope to do. And if you want to see the pictures, we can show you afterwards as well.
Where are you putting it?
It's by the bathrooms, there's a white structure. It's kind of hard to describe.
Yeah, it'll be the storage facility closest to the Bronco Field by the stream.
Yes, not the most pretty structure already, so we're hoping, and we can show you guys more as well outside. We tried to print out a bunch of workouts, but it didn't work out so.
Speaking about the imagery going on top of the, on top of the wall, we are taking inspiration from a lot of mo'olelo that surrounds Manoa. Here in this one, we mocked up a few drawings of the story of Kahalo'opuna, which is the creation story of Manoa. That's where you get the winds, the mist, the mountains and the rainbows of Manoa.
All right, any other questions or comments for our presenters? Anyone online? Going once, going twice? I was just asking for my curiosity, are you college students or?
We both recently graduated in 2024, and Riley has been a practicing artist for a while. He's done a bunch of different projects that you can kind of talk about then, and I'll share my background.
Yeah, again, I'm Riley Nakamura. I just graduated last May with a BFA in illustration from California College of the Arts in San Francisco. I now live in Oakland, moving back to Hawaii. I have done a few murals around Honolulu, including Harbor's Vintage, Mud and Water, and even Kahawiki Village off of Nimitz.
Yeah, I'm Tyler Shimabukuro. I graduated undergrad in 2024 with a bachelor's in biochemistry and molecular biology, and I'm going to be attending medical school here at Japson as well.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, you're a group, a Healthier Hawaii Corp, is that city and state funded or?
No, it's, you know, we are only two years old, we started in 2023. So that was kind of my question earlier to Representative Garrett, he's, I don't think he's any, he's here anymore, but it's pretty much self-funded donations. And for this project, we are going to hopefully be working with different organizations to get funding for the project. Unfortunately, it's not state-funded or city-funded at all.
All right, well, thanks for fielding my questions and everyone else's questions, and best of luck with the mural. Hopefully we'll see it around soon.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other items for community concerns online? Just raise your hand or shout it out if you have anything. Brett, go ahead.
Okay, one thing about Manoa Valley Park, it's becoming more of a ground zero for the stray homeless, single male homeless. They hang out in the back of the pavilion along the edge of the swimming pool where the, that multipurpose area is right by the gym. There's at least two or three gentlemen that usually hang out there. There's also occasional people that are in the scorekeeper, you know, sheds at the baseball fields, but you know, this is the time to nip it in the bud. You know, you want to, they're there on a continual basis. And if you're going to do projects like this, they're going to get trashed and you know, guys hang out at that bathroom that's near that storage area, right? There's someone that has a little scooter that camps there. So you see these people, they're recurrent, they're the same people over and over again. For us, we should nip it in the bud, you know, we can do it. And you don't want it to get big, right? You want to nip it in the bud, just like graffiti, you eradicate it when you see it, right? It's that broken window syndrome, but this applies to this population, you know? And there's that one person that sits, huddles down and crouches right in front of that new house that they built, the corner of Lowry and East Manoa. You know, that new two-story, yeah, so I mean, you see these people, they're always there, but we, and we should, we should use that new core team, the new trucks, whatever that, you know, they're expanding, get them to come out with maybe Councilmember Nishimura's office can help to, you know, get them to make a push so we can keep Manoa Park safe and allow that, you know, for these improvements to have a good, you know, good home. But it's, it's more of a safety issue for the members and also for the community. We should nip it in the bud. Thank you.
Member Zain, go ahead.
Oh, hold on, I have a question for you real quick. So the bathrooms that you're talking about that they tend to hang out around at Manoa District Park?
Yeah.
Do you know if there's a door on there that gets locked at a particular hour or if it's just like an open bathroom?
No, I'm not sure. The one that, that's near that storage shed, I don't know if it's got a lock or not.
Yeah, I go to Manoa Park fairly often. I've never seen any doors on the bathroom, so I'm pretty sure there's no lock or anything.
I don't think there is one for the bathroom itself, but I don't know of any.
Okay, something we might want to consider bringing up with the city, county, department of parks, just to maybe consider locking said bathroom after sort of an hour?
Yeah, but the people that hang out there, they're not inside the bathroom, they're just underneath the roof. They're on the outside in that little patio area. That's where they are.
No, but at least like, as much as I hate to admit, a restroom facility that's open 24/7 technically could be an attractive nuisance for such individuals. Although at the certain point, the other question becomes if you lock the door, where else were they going to go?
Well, there's a lot of open shelter space. That's where they are hanging out. It's just, they're not in the bathrooms per se, but they're in that area.
Okay, and? Hold on, need a mic.
I'm sorry. Clyde Lumen, I don't believe there's doors on any of the bathrooms.
Okay, and I think our area electives have signed off, but I'll send them an email with what Brett mentions, that they're in the loop between now and August. Do we have any discussion? Yes, go ahead.
All right, just wanted to make a quick note on the mural. So I, we recognize that there are graffitiers out there, but in our plan, we actually have incorporated anti-graffiti paint, and also we do have a process with the state in order to take that into account. Just wanted to mention that.
Okay, I saw a raised hand from Philman Lee on Zoom. If he wants to unmute and see what he wanted to say. Phildee? Phildee? Okay, anyway, so anyone else with comments on community concerns? Going once, going twice? Okay, it looks like we're done with that then. So, oh, Phildee's on camera. Can we unmute him? Okay, so moving on from community concerns, we're going to announcements. So first, item A, election results. As of May 27th, the city issued a news release that provided the 2025-2027 Neighborhood Board election results. Neighborhood Board, Subdistrict 1, the winners are Robert Zain, Alan Watson and Whitney Bosel. And in Subdistricts 2, 3 and 4, there weren't enough candidates to have competitive elections, so all candidates in 2, 3 and 4 were elected uncontested. Our next meeting, the next regular board meeting will be held on August 6th of 2025, since we'll be in recess during July of 2025. Our August meeting will again be held in person at Nolani Elementary School cafeteria as well as online via WebEx, starting at 6:30 PM, and this will be the first meeting of the 2025-2027 term. We have agenda items for next meeting. First of all, since this is the August 2025 meeting, it'll be the first meeting of the next term, which means that our agenda will contain items for election of officers and the formation or renewal of the board's committees. Also, by request of a board member, in August, we're going to consider changing from a hybrid meeting style to an in-person only meeting style, so that our meetings no longer have WebEx component. So we'll discuss more of that in August and we'll have a, we'll not vote on it at that time. Discussions will be continuing regarding dog parks and regarding the Campus Town project, and other items may be included on the agenda for August as space permits. For the Ollalali broadcast, you can watch on the second, fourth Saturdays of the month at 3:00 PM or every third Tuesday at 9:00 PM or online on the Ollalali website or on the Honolulu City website or on YouTube. Before we adjourn, do we have any final comments from anyone? All right, seeing and hearing none, the meeting is adjourned and the term is over. See you all in August.